I got four feet. I'm always two minutes slower than yours, and we're on the same network. You think?
Just funny, isn't it?
I thought everything was, you know, being on Verizon. I just assumed all, because I never, I never set the time on the clock. Pardon?
Was Kim going to make it today?
Shar didn't know.
I, I didn't hear from her. Oh, she's not coming? Oh, Deb said she's not coming, I guess. She forgot to tell me. But Mike is trying to get on, so he's, he's trying.
And, and you said that Jake is on?
Jake is on.
Okay.
We have a quorum.
Your purse is out.
It is five o'clock. Do we want to wait? Get on?
Um, well, we'll get some of this stuff. We'll get started on some of this stuff and then if he, we can always, uh, we won't vote on anything until he gets on.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Mike is trying to get on through a different way, but if you do agenda amendments, he would like Zoom on there.
Zoom?
Yes.
What's he want?
Um, he just wants to make a request.
Okay. All right. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll, we'll go ahead and take roll call. Um, Ashley?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Dustin? Jake?
Here.
Mike isn't on yet. Kim is absent. Uh, we'll go do the, go, we'll do the agenda amendments. Um, anybody besides Mike have anything? We'll, we'll just, where should we put that? We'll put it under, well, let's put it under, gee, under, after Casey's, we'll just put it there, under new business.
I, I would have, Gene, I would have an update on that, on the cleanup committee, uh, tree branch pickup, but I don't know if it needs to be on the agenda.
We'll just, you know, I, we'll just, I'll put it under unfinished business, Paul.
Okay.
Because that's a, yeah, we'll just do that. That's a continuous thing, so.
Good, thanks.
Okay. Uh, need a motion to approve the agenda amendments if there's no others?
I'll offer Ashley.
Ashley?
Second Jake.
Second Jake. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, okay, we're down to public participation and you're on the, you're up Chuck. If Vicky puts you on. Go ahead.
Okay, so I, it's been a while. The first thing is that I applied for a FEMA grant for the COVID, all our COVID expenses. And that seems to be gonna go through. I got a email and a phone call late last week about some of the final stuff. So they all reimbursed all of the masks we've spent, everything we've spent so far, plus about another $5,000 worth of equipment. That will be upcoming. They're gonna give, I got enough masks, uh, coveralls, gloves, uh, an electrostatic cleaning machine that cleans the trucks. It's kind of like a, looks like a fogger. So all that stuff, that should hopefully be pretty soon. So if this, all the, should be pretty good. Uh, the FEMA grant for all the breathing apparatus and the compressor is on delay. They won't make a ruling on that until the FEMA grants done. So I haven't heard about that lately. We did get a, a grant put in through the gas company. They were happy with what we've been doing with gas breaks for the last couple of years and helping them all. So they gave us a, they said there, it has been finalized, but they're giving us a grant and we're gonna get a bunch of rescue equipment for it. So that was a good deal. Uh, there is now. So we have a, uh, so we have like that, two grants in the pro, three grants in the process, I think. So we have the breathing apparatus grant, the natural gas separate grant, uh, there's one through the DNR. This is a 50-50 grant.
Took my phone.
So with all those grants, there's another grant that's available. We phoned out last week. It's a USD grant for equipment. And it's up to $50,000 and the percentage is based on your, the average income of the population. So if we get a, what we want to do is get a rescue tools. Uh, get new, like new jaws of life, uh, new demo saw and that kind of stuff. And a bunch of cribbing, which would probably be in that $45,000 range. So we have to go, we have to fill all the paperwork out to figure out what its cost share is. But before we do that, I want to know that if we have a cost share of like from 10 to 18,000 dollars, that would be okay.
And we would get what in return for that?
That would give us all new battery operated, like the jaws of life. There's a spreader. It'd be a spreader, a cutter, a ram, a bunch of cribbing that we're short, we don't have now. Uh, and a battery operated demo saw. The ones we have now, we bought used about 15 years ago.
Surprise, surprise. So do we, we, we don't buy the stuff until we know if we're gonna get the?
Yeah, we wouldn't move, we wouldn't buy anything until we got the grant.
Okay.
But I just want to know if we fill up the grant. It is quite a process that, that if it's 10, what, $10,000, at 10 to 18 is what we're guessing. I'll know more in a little while. They can get it a little closer, but I just wanted to make sure that that's something that the council would, would allow.
I would be in support.
Yeah, I, 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 I think I would be in support of it as long as we can, you know, as long as we know beforehand. If, anytime you can get free money, especially if it's something that we need, which if, if the equipment is 15 years old, we probably gotta start thinking about replacing it.
Yeah, we'd keep the old equipment too. So I, I mean, we've, we'd still keep that, but.
Okay.
But it would get us for a long, I mean, it'd be a long time and I'm, I don't know on the grant side of things, how long that stuff's gonna be around. Or where all that money's gonna go or, I'd like to get the grant if we can get now.
Well, get, while the getting is good, because it, at some point in time, it's, it's gonna start to dry up.
Yeah, it's for sure gonna start drying up.
So do you need a, we need a motion for this, Shar, or is this a resolution maybe?
I really don't know if we're gonna get the grant or not. I think it's something that, is this gonna be in 2020, Chuck, that we would get the money?
I don't know when, when it would pay out. No idea. We get the paperwork all done pretty soon here, but I have no idea what year that would come out.
I, I can't believe it. It may make it this year.
Yeah, I don't either. We could just put it in your 2021 budget.
Okay.
You got the paperwork for right now. Why don't you put that on there?
Okay.
And I'd be definitely in support of that too.
Yeah.
And then another thing that we've been kind of working on and looking for is, uh, our old, that old city bus we have is not, is not in great shape and leaks more exhaust fumes inside than out. The whole, it, it's just not, it was never set up for that and it got us by this far. But I found a new rescue vehicle, it's like a nor, fire truck sized, fire truck, but it doesn't have water, just a rescue vehicle. And I'm trying to get that possibly, if it works out right, through the relief association, so it wouldn't cost the city anything. But if we do get that, would the city take it? Like, we're supposed to, we give, relief gives equipment to the city. Like it has to be approved that they'll take.
I would be in favor.
You want to make that a motion, Ashley?
I will. That we will take the vehicle for the fire department.
I would second that, Paul.
And how much does it cost? Do we know?
It, it's in the loose, the loose is selling it for 20,000. But I'm gonna try it up. And this whole thing, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come out of the city budget. I don't believe. If, if we, if the fire department, this is really in the early stages of it, but if the relief association, not the city buys it, I just want to make sure the city will take it.
Okay, so we're not talking any, Mike, we're just saying that we'll take, if we can get it for nothing, we'll take.
Yep, exactly.
Okay. They got a first and a second on that motion. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, and then, uh, the last thing is, we're still, we're still having, uh, small meetings about the, the county garage. So we're still kind of, we're just coming back into that. Now we're having, we just started fireman's meetings in June. So we're, we're starting to get back into that. So I have more to, on that as, as we get into it. Hopefully by next meeting.
I, I think we'll have something by next meeting, Chuck. Um, I met with, uh, Roger Sandberg today. And it sounds like, my interpretation, what he says is that there, it's gonna be on their agenda. They've, they've got a board meeting tomorrow, commissioners meeting tomorrow, so it's gonna be on their agenda. And that's, that's, that will get it officially on the move.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll move, we can't, no sense in doing anything till then, but I think that, that they'll, it'll be official tomorrow.
Okay, well, that sounds good. And hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have something a little more ironed out.
Okay, good. Um.
Chuck, I, for doing this first run for the kids. That was wonderful. Fire department. Thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, the guys like doing, so they had fun.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's.
Anything else, Chuck?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thanks so much for that update. Appreciate it. Uh, we'll go down to the consent agenda. Uh, all those marked with an asterisk are gonna be considered routine. We'll be acted on with this one motion. Does anybody want to take anything off? Okay, can we have an emotion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll offer Jake.
I'll second Ashley.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Um, now we'll go all the way down to, under new business, Otter Tail Bill. Uh, Shar, do you wanna say something about that?
Um, yes, this came through, I believe in, I believe in 2014, there was a service territory information that came through the city and the city approved it and everything and Otter Tail never sent us a bill. And they must have realized their records had, had not been completed, so they sent us a bill. Dave has looked at it and said, it is a legitimate bill. We, we should pay for it now. The second bill came and they're starting to charge us interest on it.
Okay. We need a, a resolution to pay that.
I'll offer a resolution, Jake.
Jake offers it.
I'll second Ashley.
Ashley, is there any questions about this?
I do find it funny that they're gonna charge us for something they forgot about.
They gave us one month and then they started sending, putting financial charges on it, so whatever.
Oh, man.
All those, oh no, this is roll call. We'll start with, uh, Mike.
No.
Uh, Ashley?
Yeah.
Paul?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Um, Kim is not on, right?
Correct.
Okay, resolution carries. Uh, next one is Casey's easement. Again, Shar, I'll let you.
Okay, you know, the Casey's are in the process of tearing down the building and putting up their new diesel pump up there. And according to what I understand, the north dri, or the, basically the south driveway to, um, the city shop is going through the, um, Casey's property. And they've offered us an easement so we can continue using that driveway as for the city shop's second access to the building. So it's, it's important that we have this and it's nice that they, they consider to give us, otherwise they would be blocking that off and using it for their own use. So, um, all we need to do is to accept the easement to move forward.
We have a motion to accept this easement. That's a resolution, I'm sorry, because there's a dollar involved.
I'll offer Jake.
Jake offers it. Need a second?
I'll second.
All right, is there, uh, any discussion on this? We'll go down the list again. Mike?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Resolution carries. We're down to, uh, Mike, I put, I put you down here for Zoom.
Yes, I'd just like some discussion when we're going back to regular council meeting or if we're never going back.
I would be in favor in person.
Do we have?
Can you repeat that?
I, I would be in favor of going back to in-person meetings.
Shar, is the basement open at the library yet?
Um, I haven't talked to Vicky this week, but I, I would, I would think for sure by, I would hope the first week, the first meeting in August, or at least the second meeting, that we could be back into the basement, if that's requested the council.
Do, do we want to then, um, just say that we're gonna, if, if, we'll leave it up to Shar. If the, if the basement is available at the library or regular council meeting, that we'll just, we don't even need a motion on it. Then we'll go back to having meetings there. But if it's not open then, then Shar, you follow through and then you let us know. If, if it's available, we'll start next month. If it's not, we'll, we'll start in the middle of the month. We'll go by that. We'll go by the availability of the library.
And, and I talked to Vicky and I told her what a tremendous job she did.
Yes, I, I think she deserves an awful lot and, and she isn't just doing it for the council, but she's put a lot of meetings on. And, and I'll tell you, I think it's opened the eyes for a lot of people, the access that they can have the meetings. I, I've really, it hasn't been bad at all to do it this way.
Oh, Vicky helped me out a lot too with a lot of.
Good.
That we need to do. I really appreciate it.
Okay, we will, then Shar, we'll leave it up to you on it. When it's available, you let us know and that's what it determines. Is that okay with everybody?
Well, Gene?
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's just needs, it's available. It's just, we, we have to clean before and after. Is that the only stipulation? I mean, it's a city building.
That's not the problem right now. I guess they've used it for a bunch of books down there or something. And they have to be looked through or something before they can send the books off to be something done with them. So to get the books out of there, then they will do it and we will have to do some special cleaning. But we pay for the cleaning. The city pays for the cleaning anyway, so I don't believe that's gonna be much of a problem.
Okay, good, because I'd be in favor of meeting there.
We, I don't think we need a motion on that. We'll just leave it up to the availability of the room. When we get back in there, we'll go. Okay, then, we got that done with. The only thing we left, have left, Paul, is just a report from you on cleanup.
Yeah, so the cleanup committee, um, we are working on the tree branch pickup in September, September 12. And, uh, the National Guard, we'd be working with them and we got ironed out details there, but, uh, I think we're gonna do this. We would ask, uh, we would ask for, we'd like to do some advertising similar, not as much, but similar to what we did, um, last spring. So maybe a dollar amount of about $300 for advertising and, and mailouts. So is that something that we'd need as a resolution, Shar?
That probably would be a resolution. We still haven't received the final bills on the other pickup yet. I mean, there still may be some money available in that.
Oh.
We just haven't received them yet.
Okay, well, that's, we would be looking at, you know, it's a September 12th, but we'd probably want to get ads out maybe by August 21st, right in there. So we have a little time, but, um, and, and then I wanted to get everybody else's thoughts. If this is a good idea, I mean, uh, what would be asking is if people wanted to trim, these aren't whole trees, of course, but trim branches and then maybe lay them on the curb side. And then, and then we'd have pickup there, um, with the volunteers, with the guards, is, is tentatively how that's gonna go. So.
Are you thinking of having them, them, like letting us know, or are we just gonna cover the whole city and?
Right, so probably like we did before, a pre-registration and, and maybe that would be the mailout. And then when they pay their bills or something, send something in that way for paper or else possibly.
Yeah, and then get an, at least have an idea of how many you're doing.
Yeah, and once again, this would be, this would be just branches that are trimmed and laying out on the curb side. Is how we envision it to happen.
I think it's a good idea. Appreciate all you've done on this, Paul and your committee, and, and we'll just, okay, let's just move forward with it and, and see how it goes.
Otherwise, if, if we do need a resolution, I'd, I'd offer that up.
Up to 300?
Of 300.
Yeah. You're, you're.
Sorry. Because it costs more last time than I thought it would be.
Oh.
It, it'd cost more, but I do have that bill in front of me with about $800 or something.
For advertising, or for advertising and mailing?
Mailouts and everything, yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's gonna mail out to everybody. It's gonna cost with the postage and the, it depends on what, what you're gonna mail out there.
Yeah, we talked about, you know, something similar with the bill, with billing, or we did it last time.
Yeah, but it costs more than, than I expected it when the bill came because of the postage has gone up a bit.
Okay.
So it was around $800.
Okay, so I change that to 800 then, and hopefully we'd have some leftover from this spring's cleanup and that budget. But I would offer the resolution for $800.
I need a second on that?
I'll second.
Ashley, is there any more discussion on it? All those in favor, oh, resolution. Um, we'll start with Mike. Mike?
Yes.
Oh, I, I didn't hear it. I'm sorry. Jake?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Paul?
Yeah.
Ashley?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Uh, resolution carries. Uh, the only thing that we have left is, is make a res, somebody want to make a resolution to pay the bills?
Gene, we didn't, staff reports.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. Is anybody, do we have any staff reports?
I, I don't.
Okay.
I don't have any. We've been, we've been pretty busy with the street project as part of our thing and, and the CARES Act, we got the application in. And I guess we'll get some funding probably by the end of July, the first part of August. And I believe Vicky's been working hard with trying to figure out how the businesses are going to need it. We're trying to put together a list of expenses we have. So I think we'll utilize all the $136,000 the city is going to be granted.
Shar, um, so that's what the application is for, is the total amount? Is that this?
It sounds it will be, because I, we put the application that's been in. Um, I think by the end of the month or the first part of August, we'll get the money now. It doesn't have a key vault money, but if we get the money in hand, I guess. And then if we, if we can use it for proper expenditures, we can use all our money. But the county's got money too, so they gotta work between the businesses from the county and the city to make sure we can utilize the money and help the businesses out the more, the most we can.
How, how are the businesses getting notified?
I've been getting notices even through, um, Facebook or M F, letting people know. So a lot of the, you're in town and, and our smaller communities with, are all connected on. He does a really good job. And then the other individual that helps me have done a really good job of reaching out and tagging people in those posts. Yet as well.
How do we know though if some don't do Facebook?
I think it's more.
I think that Vicky has been, Vicky has been working pretty close on this. Uh, I know we've been talking about it, the E D A, and I, I don't think there's, I don't think there is any businesses that don't realize that this stuff is available. You know, it doesn't, right now, it doesn't mean they're gonna get it. We're gonna, we're gonna have to come up with some criteria. And I think, and Vicky, if you're listening or if you're on, I think the E D A is trying to, we started talking about trying to develop some criteria on how we're gonna, you know, what, how we're gonna do this. And are you on, Vicky?
Yes.
Why don't you explain it a little bit about what we talked about at the last meeting?
Okay, um, between Shar and I, we've been very busy talking about what the funds are available and what through the city. I'm also working through Vince. We were both on the task force meeting last week, Shar and I. And, um, basically what we're doing right now is we have examples of other programs for the grant funding. So it's depending on how much the county is going to be having available for, um, the businesses. I did, I've had out several surveys for people, businesses to put input into what their needs are, what their revenue losses have been. Um, Vince, well, I'll be giving him all that information. He'll be talking to the county tomorrow. Um, but basically at this point, um, we're putting together a program in anticipation of funds. And looking at where the cities have funds and the county has funds, how the counties will need to go across the county. And then the cities will have to look at how they can focus in on some of the special needs of businesses within the city. So we're looking at other programs and looking at the guidelines and putting that together. But, you know, there isn't a program so far the city or the county hasn't told us how much money would be in this program. So of course, the program hasn't been created yet. That really depends on, you know, the commissioners tomorrow at their meeting.
I've, I've got a question for Vicky.
Yeah.
I got a application in the mail for the VFW Minnesota pump. Is, is that part of it?
That wasn't an actual application, but you guys handed it in. And what that, that revenue dollars is for is to show the county the need. And yes, the VFW and the Moose and though you guys will be involved in any fundings that come in to be able to apply for the grant funding for businesses because you are employers.
Okay.
Yep. And thanks for handing that in because that's being very helpful for the, um, presentation at the commissioners tomorrow to establishing how many funds can go to help.
So, Vicky, that's what you're asking for then is, is businesses to send this back in? Because I've talked to several that really didn't know, you know, that this was going on, just over a week.
Well, I'm, the program isn't out there yet. So I've already talked to Julie at K D I O and we'll get information to the Arttonville Independent also, but we don't have a program yet. The information that I sent out was a very quick, after last Wednesday's meeting, was, businesses, please respond to this quickly so we'll have an estimate on how much revenue was lost during these four months compared to last year's four months. All the application was that they filled out was to help us present to the county that there is a need for our businesses. If the county puts money towards this, then a program will need to be set up. If the county puts money towards this, then a program will need to be set up. And by all means, we'll be, we'll be on K D I O, we'll be on the Independent, we'll be online. We can make phone calls to businesses. Um, nobody that, this was just a quick questionnaire online, which I think I had about 30 of them fill it out, um, to help us get an estimate of need just to, we, we won't be able to cover everybody's losses, but we wanted a number to present to the commissioners tomorrow that our businesses have lost a lot of revenue in those months.
Okay, yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah, all we were doing is, we were just gathering information to make our case for the businesses. And so if they give money, then we'll create the program and, and Shar and I have been working together on this as far as what we can do with the city versus the county funds. But it's all really starting with commissioners tomorrow and knowing how much there, so.
And, and. And then if the city doesn't use everything, then it gets allocated back to the county.
Well, I, I really don't foresee that that is going to be an issue because the city can create their own programs to help our businesses, particularly in the city of Ortonville. So we're working on a program on how the county funds and the city funds, because Graceville got funds, um, Ortonville got funds. And so I guess I'm not foreseeing in looking at the needs of our businesses in Ortonville that we would be putting the money to the county.
Yep.
And, and something we should keep in mind on this. This isn't, at least my interpretation of it, when we, when we decide on how they're going to disperse that money. Let's say 50, now we don't, let's say 25 businesses put in for it. We're not just going to take X amount of dollars and divide that up 25 ways. We're going to try to determine a need based, my interpretation is, so the people that suffered the worst or the most, had the biggest loss of revenue are the ones that are going to have the, the chance to get money on that. As we know, there were many businesses in Ortonville that never closed. That, that never, so there shouldn't be on some of those, any loss of business at all. But we know that the, like, the bars and the restaurants didn't have a choice and they're still being affected because they're still being controlled by the, by the state on how many people they can have. So I'm thinking that we will probably, I'm, I'm not speaking for the E D A or Shar, but I'm thinking we would probably try to develop when we get, know how much money we're going to get, to give it where it's needed most, not to just, you know, across the board, everybody gets $500 or something. I think that, that businesses that show the need and have suffered the most should get the most.
Although some of the businesses did remain open, like McCann shops, it doesn't mean that our revenue is the same.
And.
No.
You know, I mean, like, so even though that some of these essential businesses were required to stay open, some of them did see us also.
Yep.
Yeah.
And so.
And it's going to have to be shown.
Action.
We're not just, they're going to have to have finance, I, I'm sure they're going to have to have financials to show.
Yeah, I'm just stating it's not just businesses that had to completely close. It's also businesses that were required to be open to the clock. Because, I mean, people weren't leaving. So it doesn't mean if their business was open that they were receiving their normal amount of revenue either.
I don't know what the period of time is, but our, our, all of our bars and restaurants in town are still somewhat restricted on what they can do. You know, so they'll have to prove, they're going to have to prove, I'm assuming in whatever program they are, they're going to have to provide the information to show that they had a loss or that their revenue is down, not necessarily a loss.
Yep, that's all part of the application process that we're putting together. And we're putting that together based on funds we don't even know we'll have yet so that we'll be ready.
Is there anything else?
I do have a question for Scott. Quick, um, I was just curious. Kind of like go around and I was just noticing like our, um, our handicap parking, like where we paint on the curbs and those different things, they're kind of getting wore down in a few spots pretty bad. I didn't know, like, if that's like every two years or like if there's rotation or anything along the lines or if it's done at a certain time of year or not, but.
And we're thinking about doing some striping of the handicaps or the, not just the handicap, but the crosswalks and stuff this week.
That'd be good. Have we ever thought anymore? I've had three calls in the last two weeks about could we go back to having parking lines on Main Street?
Yeah, I don't know. They, they quit doing them. We could do it, but takes a little more time to put all the parking stalls back in. We'd have to remeasure everything.
I think that was a street and utility, um, committee recommendation a few years.
I believe so.
That much, if that's a request of the council, we could go back to that committee and see what they say.
Is it just because we feel like space isn't being utilized right or something on Main Street is, is that?
Well, that, that's what I've been, that's what the three people that talked to me said, there, it was different businesses said that you go down and people are just kind of adversely parking anywhere and once somebody gets away, it's, can throw the whole block off. And it does look nicer. I, I don't know and.
Maybe we should. It looks pretty rough. It looks pretty rough when you go down there on a Saturday. There's like, the parking spots are absolutely, but they're horrible.
Let's put it back to the utilities and ask them for a recommendation for the.
Maybe it's a law enforcement issue, Jason.
I'm sure he'd appreciate taking care of that.
I call for street utility to bring her back.
You, you, you want, you want it back?
Yes, I think they do. I think that's where we should start.
Well, I mean, if, if, what I'm asking is, Jason, are you saying you would prefer to have it?
We, we have not gotten any complaints as far as parking. No.
It, it actually works better this way.
With no lines, you mean, Mike?
Correct. Because they're going to, they're going to park the same way they do now. Lines doesn't mean anything though.
I don't know. I, I, I'm with Dustin on this. I, I go down there a lot and there's just happenstance all over and I don't think that, I don't think, I think it makes it look nicer and I, I mean, it's, it's not a matter of that it's going to bankrupt the city of Ortonville if we paint our stripes.
Go to the clinic sometime and look at the parking lot and see if they use the full lines. Let's, let's just talk at, at street and utility.
Yep, I agree.
That's fine.
Scott, I would ask, um, did you find out anything on that little piece down by Subway in Artie's, that little triangle piece? I see it's been sprayed off and, you know, I guess my interest in it, something to dress it up a little bit. You know, if we have to hire dipper, like, do that.
That's, that stayed right away. That's state property and I haven't heard anything back from the state of Minnesota.
Who sprayed it?
Down here. We sprayed it. But that, that whole property and half of what Artie uses for parking lot is all state property.
Who, who sprayed it off?
We did. No, the city sprayed the weeds.
Okay, well, who did work in there in the past?
Didn't, didn't, didn't at one time, didn't, wasn't the garden club or Red, is somebody going to get involved in that?
Didn't somebody, private individual worked on it for a summer or two? And now it's just been kind of left and I just feel, you know, as council, I think it's pretty, pretty visible and I'd like to see something down there. Maybe not anymore, but sometime going forward.
Can we do anything without state permission other than spray it?
We can't do any digging in there unless we get a permit from the state of Minnesota.
Well, maybe we should just, maybe what we should do is put in a permit that says that we want to clean it up and do some digging and, and, I mean, at least then they got to come back our, our request. They either yes or no.
I just got to have papers out for the morning for sure.
You know.
They, they ditched on it?
Because that, that's different in that other kiosk.
Yes. That's. The E D, I think the E D L A owns the other kiosk. But maybe just to get the ball rolling, Scott, why don't you do whatever is necessary to apply to the state? And just say, we want to clean it up. We want, might want to remove some of the dirt and whatever and to get their permission to do it. Because without their permission, they're, that way they have to make a decision, yes or no.
Okay, I can check on that. Get it put in.
Okay. Is there anything else anybody wants to discuss? Paul? I, I mentioned to you on the, today when we talked about it, but be sure to talk to Mike Swenson and, because I know what a good, loving, caring person he is. And he'll, we'll get him to write up an article on the September cleanup. Is he paying any attention?
Yeah. Greatest suck up I've ever heard, Gene. Thanks.
We appreciate all that you do, Mike. Thanks so much. Is there anything else anybody has? If not, uh, didn't, we didn't do a resolution on that. No, we got to pay the bills. We need a resolution to pay the bills.
I'll offer.
Ashley?
I'll second Paul and then I would have a question for, for Shar. Um, there's one on there to Dave Davis and I, I don't understand. So it's for the pool, I think?
Yes.
How does that work?
Well, we don't, we can't, we don't have a credit card, so he, he purchased it and we reimbursed him.
So where's he, where are the supplies?
Well, there's a bill. There's a bill that he turns in for the supplies.
Okay, and with the auditors and everything that, I mean, that.
Fine, as long as we have a bill. Now, we've done this, we've done all the, several times.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call. We'll start with Mike.
Upstate.
Jake?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Paul?
Yeah.
Ashley?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Uh, bills have been paid. If there's nothing else, meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody. And we, and we'll, again, reminder, we'll leave it up to Shar for next week of the, or next meeting if it, if it's available at the library, next meeting we'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.